Okay. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Monday, December eighteenth at the time now is six thirty-two P M. I am going to call to order or call order this commission. Sorry, I'm very new at this. So next on the agenda will be roll call certification of quorum. We do have a quorum. All the commissioners are present tonight except for Commissioner Boswell, Coon, and Eisenberg, with the possibility that Commissioner Coon may be joining us later. Next on the agenda will be the introduction of agenda format hearing. Martin?
So for each item tonight, we'll have a call to order followed by a staff report. Then the applicant will have their opportunity to make their presentation. Afterwards, we'll have public comment in support or opposition. At that time, please state your name and address for the record. Be brief until pointed within a three-minute timeframe. Following all of that, we'll have council, our commission and staff discussion. The commission will vote to recommend approval as presented, approval with conditions, denial of the request or two-tailed item. City council will pick up this or these actions for consideration of the conditional use permit at their Tuesday, January ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting. On the order of the agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda, an excusal of absences for Commissioners Boswell and Hendricks from the December fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting, and then approval of minutes also from December fourth, twenty twenty-three. Then we have three items on new business. The first is a final plat for Hill Homestead. It's property off of Lee Road, variance from the maximum three-to-one lot depth-to-width ratio. This is for property out on Wilkie Road. And then a conditional use permit for a single-family detached dwelling within the Old Town Mixed-Use zoning district at twenty-two oh nine North Houston Avenue. Following those three items, we'll have two commission input and discussion, first of which is on the Pearland Prosperity Draft Strategic Plan update. And then last will be hearing from our planning intern on their capstone project. So with that, Chair, I will pass back to you for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Martin. So next, like Martin said, is the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Nope. Okay, hearing, no removal. I make a motion to approve?
You're asking for a motion.
Need a motion, need a motion to approve.
Commissioner Fuertes, motion to approve.
Commissioner McCaffrey, second.
Okay, all right. So we'll okay, so we'll move to vote. Everybody that approves this, please do so by raising your right hand. Okay, and the vote is approved four to zero. Okay, next will be new business. Number one on the new business is consideration of possible action plat twenty-three dash one-two-one, final plat of the Hill Homestead. A request by Matthew Sigmund, Texas Land Map, the applicant on behalf of Walter Hill owner for approval of the final plat of the Hill Homestead, creating two lots on three point one-nine acres located east of Lee Road, County Road six-four, described to wit. The general location, east of Lee Road Pearland. And can I get a staff report? Oh, sorry, sorry about that. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Request for one.
Request for a motion to approve.
Commissioner Fuertes, motion to approve.
Commissioner Dugas, second.
Okay, staff report.
All right, let me introduce Florence Boulkou. Florence, take it away.
I have to go back because
kind of a click.
I have a new clicker. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. This is a request for a final plat for Hill Homestead to create two single-family lots on three point one-nine acres. The property is currently undeveloped. And so staff has looked at this from the list of things that are required to be conforming, and it does conform with everything the final plat is in progress at the moment. The property is Zon Suburban Residential twelve, and the proposed use is for a single-family residential, which is consistent with the proposed use of the lot, of the two lots. The underlying future land use is suburban residential, and that is also consistent with the proposed use. This is a layout of the plat. It has one flag lot and one regular lot. The flag lot did receive a variance from the commission. The applicant has submitted the subdivision improvement agreement for the construction of the road that runs in front of the subdivision, and that has been approved, and so it is ready for the final plat, which is before the commission today. Staff has reviewed the final plat based on the criteria outlined in section three point one, point five, point four of the Unified Development Code, and has determined that it does meet the approved preliminary plat and all the other requirements of for approving a final plat, and therefore staff is recommending approval of the final plat. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Okay, next would be the applicant presentation.
Do we need one for a final plat?
Yeah.
You don't need one. If the applicant wants to say something, they're welcome to do so. If they're just here, if there's a question, they can say that as well.
Is the applicant here?
No, I don't see that.
So persons wishing to speak for?
There was no public hearing for that one.
Oh, okay.
So unless somebody submitted a form.
Yeah, okay, so same with persons wishing to speak for or against?
I'm correct.
It's not a public hearing, so unless somebody filled out a speaker request and submitted it, you don't need to worry about that part.
Okay, very good. All right. So staff, commission, applicant discussion, not applicant, but staff discussion?
I have questions.
No.
I don't have any.
Okay, so next would be, I make a request to motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Oh, oh, that's right, okay. Then I make a, all those that approve, so by raising your right hand. Four to zero. Should've wrote my answer.
You got thrown into this mix.
Okay. All right, next, number two on the list, consideration of possible action, V A R P twenty-three dash one-nine variance from the maximum three-to-one lot depth to lot width ratio. Can I get a request? Oh, actually, keep going, public hearing, a request by Donna Echols, a pro-serv, the applicant on behalf of Mario Jonathan Moreno, owner for approval of variance permitted in section two point six, point one, point one B, one of the Unified Development Code, ordinance number two thousand dash T, from section three point two, point fourteen, point two C, to allow the creation of two lots that exceeds the maximum three-to-one lot depth to lot width ratio in the partial replat of J.C. Rodriguez Estates subdivision, described to wit, general location thirteen zero two-five Wilkie Road, Pearland, Texas. Can I get a request for a motion to approve?
Commissioner McCaffrey, I will make that motion.
Commissioner Dugas, second.
Okay, so next will be the staff report.
Let's get Florence, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Martin. This request is for a variance from the maximum three-to-one lot depth-to-width ratio. This is a lot that has an approximate depth of two hundred and sixty-eight feet and an approximate width of eighty-one feet, yielding a depth-to-width ratio which is slightly more than the maximum, that is three point two-nine to one, and the intent is to develop a single-family residential. This is part of a residential replat for which we did send notices to the public. However, a sign was not placed on the property, so we had to postpone the replat hearing. So this is specifically for the variance hearing, but we did receive one comment in opposition to the replat and other variance. And the concern was the potential of flooding because of the additional lot that will be created. The property is Zon Suburban Residential, which supports the proposed single-family residential development. So that was the future land, the zoning for the property, a single-family residential one, which is also quite supports the proposed use as well. And so this is the subdivision of the lot created two long and narrow lots. And staff has reviewed this based on the criteria outlined in the U D C for approval of variances. It does meet all the criteria except that the variance is not necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of the petitioner because they can still build on that one lot if it meets all the other criteria. And staff has looked at this, the two proposed lots do meet the minimum requirements of the single-family residential one lot except for the maximum lot depth-to-width ratio, and based on that, staff is recommending approval of the proposed variance. Thank you, and that concludes staff report.
Okay, next would be the applicant presentation. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is not here. We have the previous property owner, but
Oh, okay.
He's not the current owner.
Okay, so next would be persons wishing to speak for or against? Anybody here wishing to speak for or against? All right, staff, commission, anybody on the commission have anything, questions?
Just, just one comment that an applicant, I'm sorry, not an applicant, someone called in, but it was for, not for this necessarily, this item. It was for the replat, and their concern was flooding. With such a large lot, I think these, and I don't recall how many acres or fractions of an acre these lots were.
It's point five oh one acres, so a little fund income.
I mean, the, the coverage on something like that is so minimal that I don't think floodings are concerned, and that's also not within our purview to just really make a decision anyway, so. Or we've, we've, we've kind of all stated that, so I'm, I'm for it.
So this was also discussed with engineering, and they did confirm that any flattened consents will be meditated during the development process.
Perfect.
I don't have any further comments.
I have no comments.
I'm going to go ahead. Now, since this is a variance, we still vote on this one, right? Correct. Okay, so for all, I would like to make a motion for approval. All those in favor, please do so by raising your right hand. That's us, four to zero. All right, next is consideration of possible action, conditional use permit application, top twenty-three dash two-one. A request by Jonah Epperson, applicant on behalf of Emily Epperson, owner for approval of conditional use permit for dwelling, single-family detached use on approximately zero point two-eight-seven acres of land within the Old Town Mixed-Use OTMU District, two with general location twenty-two oh nine North Houston Avenue, Pearland, Texas. Can I make a motion to approve?
For, you're requesting it.
Request a motion to approve.
Commissioner Fuertes, motion to approve.
Commissioner Dugas, second.
Okay, staff report.
All right, I would introduce Patrick Power to take this case.
Patrick, thank you, Martin. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. The conditionings permit as mentioned for tonight is for a dwelling, single-family detached use in the Old Town Mixed-Use District, and specifically it's for an approximately four thousand square foot, single-family dwelling. The location is, as you mentioned, twenty-two oh nine North Houston Avenue, and the future land use for the property is the Village District. To date, staff has not received any written comments or phone calls in favor or against the request. So looking at the surrounding zonings of the zoning of the surrounding properties, on all sides, it's surrounded by the Old Town Mixed-Use District zoning, as you can see. And then looking at the future land use for the property, the surrounding properties are also within the Village District future land use, which is the future land designation for pretty much predominantly all of the Old Town site districts, so it's meant to support the Old Town site zoning districts. Looking at the aerial view of the property, you can kind of see in the yellow box, it's pretty hardwood. There's actually two large, very large trees on the property currently, and it's surrounded on all sides by single-family residential as well. A little bit of history on the property, it was originally developed with a single-family residence in nineteen forty. It was then annexed into the city in nineteen fifty-nine, and then more recently in twenty twenty-three, the property was platted. It was originally like two, two or three lots, and then the original residence that was on the site was moved to a new location. And then most recently, at the December seventh, twenty twenty-three zoning board adjustment meeting, the board approved a variance for the proposed development to deviate from the minimum front setback for an accessory building in the Old Town Mixed-Use District, and specifically the requests pertain to the detached garage, which is to be, with the approval, is allowed to be in front of the front face of the actual dwelling, which is the principal building on the site. And so here we get a look of the property from Houston Avenue. The left-hand image is kind of more of the northern portion of the site. You can see it's a very large tree there, I believe that's a forty-eight inch oak tree, and then on the right-hand image, you see the kind of the more southern portion of the site, and additionally, there's also a large existing oak tree there as well, which are to be preserved as shown in the site plan. And so here we get a look at the property with North Houston Avenue's at the bottom of your screen, and the alleyway is at the top. And so the proposed dwelling is kind of, if north is kind of your, what would it be, your, your left-hand side of the image? The dwelling is to be positioned on the north-hand side with that detached garage being where that variance was approved for, and then obviously you can tell the very large trees that are proposed to be preserved on the site. And here we get a look at some of the renderings. The top image is the front elevation if we're looking from Houston Avenue, and then the bottom image is the rear elevation if you were standing in the alleyway, looking there. And then finally, we get a look at the right and left elevation, and the right elevation would be looking, if you're standing on the southern property, looking at it, and then the left elevation would be if you're at the north property, looking south towards the property. And so looking at the review criteria, we found that the proposed C U P is consistent with the future land use designation of the Village District. In terms of thoroughfare plan, the proposed use has frontage on Houston Avenue, which is designated as a local residential street. In terms of the U D C, the proposed use will, it's required to conform to all the regulations of the Old Town Mixed-Use District when developing. And then in terms of utilities, the subject property has access to water along Houston Avenue and sewer within the alley at the rear of the property. And looking at the approval criteria for a conditional use permit, staff found that the requested use met all seven of the approval criteria for a C U P. As, as mentioned, the proposed use meets the established criteria for approval of a C U P, and additionally, the proposed use is consistent with the conference of plans, specifically the future land use designation, and the surrounding uses on all sides. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested C U P, and that concludes staff report.
Okay, next would be applicant presentation. Is the applicant here?
I'm here, but I'm just here to answer.
Just answer, okay. All right, very good. So next would be persons wishing to speak for or against? Anybody here to speak for or against?
So I'll, I'll speak, I guess, more for, my name, my name's Ken.
Can you step up to the mic and then just state your name and your address?
My name is Ken Long. My address is in Clear Lake, but I own the property across the street, which is twenty-two ten. And also a note, my mom grew up at, at twenty-two oh nine, so I have some, some history of, of the, the area. And I'll just say I'm for it because I like to see the growth, and I've, I've, I've looked online at the plans, and it looks like a very nice house, and the fact that they are, they are working to conserve the trees, you know, with the roots and everything, because like I say, I was playing in those yard when I was little, and so that's all I want to say, just, that's why I'm here, and to see how all this works.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you fill out one of the green sheets, sir? Would you be so kind?
Sure.
Somebody will direct you towards that right now. We just want to make sure we track the person who spoke.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so next will be commission input.
In the comments. Looks like it'll fit.
First off, it's a huge house, much bigger than the, than the neighboring houses, I would say, and that's, that's great. It's just beefing up the area and increasing some values there, so hats off to you. Thank you for working with those trees especially. I don't know how you got the other house off of there, but congratulations there. A shout out to the Z B A that, that approved, you know, the variance, and to the staff for working with them. As we, as we continue to grow as a town, we're going to be doing a lot of these fill-ins and re-habs, et cetera. And I hope with our new U D C rewrite that we make this even easier, and I'm assuming you went through a big, lots of process. So thank you for going through that, and I hope you get the house of your dreams, your forever home right there. But, but I hope that we make it even easier in the future, you know, with the U D C rewrite, so.
My comment is, I'm definitely for it, but this goes back to when we were talking about the dwelling use, you know, for the little, I guess, garages and stuff like that. Were we planning in the future to expand on that? Is there, are they, is anybody going to be using this to live in? Because I thought that's what I, what he said.
It's just a detach, I mean, the one part is detached.
Oh, it's just detached, it's not, somebody's not going to be living, I thought it was like above a garage apartment or something.
Yeah, I leave the, if we go back.
I don't know why I thought you said that.
Is that the front of the property?
Yeah, you'll see on the, on the plaque, that one right there. See, it's right there to the right.
And that's just a one-story, I'm reading, that's just, just pure garage.
Looks like it has a sidewalk.
Uh huh, yeah.
I was wondering where that sidewalk is. I mean, i- is there a sidewalk on that street, number one, number two? Is it out of their boundary and on the right of it?
There's not a current sidewalk. I don't think, very rare, I don't even think the, the properties to the south were recently developed. Like they had, she had to get C U Ps as well, and it's likely that the sidewalk may not have been required because there's, you know, a ditch, and there's an exemption within the code for that, so.
And I hope you give, grant the same variance for them.
Well, any other comments? All right, so I call for a vote for approval. Everybody raise your right hand if you approve. Okay, four to zero, passes.
Dan, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
It looks really nice. Next will be commission and input and discussion, Pearland Prosperity Draft Strategic Plan update. This discussion will cover the update of the Pearland Prosperity Strategic Plan and the process of developing the updated strategy. Can I make a request for approval?
It's just an input?
It's just input, okay, all right. All right, so I have to stay. Staff?
So, Matt, can you use the plug?
Yes.
So while Matt is working on that, let me formally introduce Matt DeVoe. I have, I had the pleasure of listening to his, his presentation on this topic, done a few times now, and each time I learned a little something about the city that I didn't know the previous time. Matt is with Broad Ripple Strategies and has been a partner with Economic Development as they work through updating the Pearland Prosperity Plan. And I will punt it to him as soon as he's
Well, you're, you're doing an impressive job filibustering here. I, I think I've got this under control here, but I will just start off by saying, first of all, thank you, Chair, thank you, members, for your time this evening. I will, I will be brief, but I would like to just take this opportunity to talk a little bit about the Pearland Prosperity update because I think it has a lot of relevance to the work you do here at Planning and Zoning, and I think that you'll, you'll see that as we start to go through the draft strategy, so. There we go, all right, very exciting. So Martin, thank you for the introduction. Matt DeVoe with Broad Ripple Strategies. We are a community and economic development firm. We have been around as a firm for about three and a half years, but together with my partner, Alex Perlstein, we have been in the business combined more than thirty years, doing economic development strategies all across the country, including here in Pearland previously with the Pearland twenty-twenty plan in twenty thirteen, and then the Pearland Prosperity Plan for which this update is being prepared, which was developed toward the tail end of twenty nineteen into early twenty twenty. So just really quickly here, just want to give you an overview of where we've been with the process, talk a little bit about what is in this near-final draft of the strategy, field any questions or comments that you might have, and then just talk to you a little bit about where we're headed next with the process. So this is the Pearland Prosperity Framework as it exists now, in terms of the strategy that is, you know, kind of currently in effect. But this is a strategy basically designed to promote economic growth and diversification within the city of Pearland, and also take steps to ensure that this remains a community of choice within greater Houston for lots of different types of businesses and residents who have lots of options about where they might live or, or work or put down roots, and making Pearland as competitive as it could possibly be for those individuals and so forth. And so this has led to a lot of different successes. I wish I had time for you this evening here to recap them, but the E D C and their partners have done a really impressive job of kind of keeping up with some of that progress. So if you don't know about it, I do highly encourage you to, to check some of that out through the Pearland Economic Development Corporation. But our goal here now with this process that we've been undertaking is to create an ambitious update to this strategy in order to continue to promote that economic success and ensure that Pearland remains a community of choice in this very dynamic and successful region of greater Houston. So that has been carried out through a three-phase process, which is nearing completion next month, in fact, and we are right now on the cusp of wrapping up the second phase of the process, which was the actual strategic planning element, and then shifting in now to the final phase of the process regarding implementation guidelines. Basically, if the, the strategy represents what we want to do as a community to become a more prosperous and successful place, the implementation guidelines talk a little bit about how that can happen, and what some of the partners that need to be involved, timelines, budgets, and metrics, and all of those fun things. Just really quickly on the strategy development process, a lot has gone into this on the strategic planning side, working with the Pearland Prosperity Committee, that is a volunteer group of public, private, nonprofit leaders who have been guiding the implementation of the current Pearland Prosperity Plan. Also, multiple discussions, including one in early October with city council and the P E D C board. We actually just had another one of those this evening as well, as well as some discussions with the Chamber of Commerce. And that all led to a preparation, an actual full draft strategy that was reviewed by the Pearland Prosperity Committee in November. Also, some discussion with city and E D C staff about being kind of their perceptions on some of the tactical detail, and that has then led us into the, the current framework. And so let's talk just very briefly then about what is actually in the near-final strategy, some of which is certainly going to be revised a bit based on feedback we received this evening from council and the E D C board, and I suspect we'll have some further great feedback tomorrow morning when we meet with the Pearland Prosperity Committee, break early. So just in terms of the basis for this, this all started with a research and input phase that was built around interviews with top leaders in the community, a focus group of young professionals, a targeted online survey that went out to people who kind of had some type of role to play in implementation or could in the future. Also, review of lots of existing reports and research that are here in Pearland, there's a tremendous volume of it, all very good, and that was very helpful. We supplemented that with And that was a very helpful, we supplemented that with some new quantitative research. To try to understand a little bit more about what the community's, uh, competitive position is for jobs and talent and investment, uh, currently. Um, and then some input as well from all these different groups I've mentioning, Pearland Prosperity Committees, City Council, EDC Board, Chamber, and so forth. And so some key takeaways from research here, I'll just, uh, spend a, uh, just a few moments, talking about some of the highlights. You know, really a lot of, um, wins in economic development, and when we say wins, we're talking about attracting, uh, new firms to the community. Or helping existing firms in Pearland, uh, grow and expand and adding primary jobs. Those are, those are in, uh, business sectors like manufacturing or professional services that export goods and services to other, um, parts of. The United States or other parts of the world, um, and when you export things like that, you bring in new wealth into a community, so. Lots of really strong progress there, um, the number one factor in attracting, uh, businesses, helping businesses grow is talent and workforce development. And Pearland is very fortunate to have a highly educated, highly diverse workforce. That is a major, major asset for, um, economic growth and diversification. And some new workforce development capacity as well in the form of a workforce development director position at the EDC. Uh, the Chamber doing some work in that area as well. Uh, sites and infrastructure, something that, uh, potentially gets into a little bit of your world, um, required really to remain in the game. Having to have the places that businesses can actually go, and especially when we start to talk about uses like manufacturing, that becomes very important. Um, existing businesses and opportunities to start a new business as well. Also things that have been, um, key topics of discussion among stakeholders. So when we start to talk about the competitive for business, I think there's some pretty clear successes. Um, and some pretty clear opportunities to continue to grow in the future. Uh, one of the big questions that emerged from the conversations with stakeholders however, was around. What are we really doing to kind of maintain that status or even enhance it as a community of choice? And so, there's a really, really strong, what I'm calling here, your core value proposition. You've got great public schools, very, very strong public safety, uh, relatively, at least compared to some other highly competitive suburbs. Relatively affordable housing stock, but a lot of other places can offer some of these similar benefits in, uh, Greater Houston and in other regions as well. And so, what are some of those things that kind of differentiate Pearland from other options that people might have? And especially when we start to think about the, uh, nature of what's going on in the broader world around you. In terms of lots of growth occurring in, uh, now, uh, to the south of this area now, in Manville and and so forth. And increasing competition for that talent, and so, really a strong consensus among stakeholders that. There's gotta be something to just, a little bit more on the quality of place, quality of life kind of side, to make sure that this is continuing to be a community of choice. And that particularly is relevant when you start to think about the realities of land use in Pearland and what is left in terms of very large tracts of land. Not many, in fact, possibly zero, so. Some discussion around what is the community going to do to continue to be an attractive destination as it enters this new phase in its its, uh, its life. So, this is the current framework that we're working with, um, this is, um, so the the core goal at the heart of this, really. If we could just distill it down into one very short sentence, Pearland will be a community of choice for people and businesses within our region. So, that community of choice tagline really has resonated with lots of people and, um, here in your community. And the the idea here is that this is about being attractive for both talented individuals and people and families and current and future residents. Uh, but also then sort of the the businesses that are really important to maintaining a diverse and broad and sustainable tax base. And so that can be advanced through eleven key initiatives. And so, here is a quick overview of of this framework, so the eleven key initiatives around there, you can see six of them in orange. That are really more kind of targeted toward being a community of choice for people. Uh, five there at the bottom, a little bit more about, uh, kind of that business competitiveness, but there's a lot of overlap here, there's a lot of interconnectivity. And I think that the circular nature of the graph that kind of conveys that all of this is is really designed to work together. Um, so let me just, uh, take you through a a couple of these, uh, key initiatives here. I'm gonna focus primarily on the ones that I think probably have the most relevance to this group. But if you have any questions or or thoughts along the way, please feel free to 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 jump in. And, uh, we'll also just have a little bit of, uh, time for Q and A as I conclude. So, uh, one of the most important things that we kept hearing in, uh, stakeholder input was. One of the key quality of place needs is our places to gather. So, a vibrant mixed-use entertainment district in Lower Kirby. Uh, activity in Pearland Town Center, um, other potential areas in the community like, um, on, uh, you know, the sort of Pearland Parkway, for instance. Other potential places that could create those kind of spaces where people could actually, um, come together in both formal and informal ways. Um, really emerged as kind of one of those sort of place differentiators that some of other highly competitive suburbs of Greater Houston have. That maybe Pearland is lacking at at this particular time. Old Town, uh, you know, we we had some, uh, conversation about that here earlier tonight. Uh, this is another area where people really want to see some activity, understanding that, um, it would be a long-term incremental process. Um, in terms of the the ownership situation, uh, we were talking about, uh, even just some of the infrastructure, a lot of open ditches, you know. It's, uh, if in terms of being a walkable area, um, that's a pretty key consideration, so. Long-term investments and probably an understanding there and recommendation before that, uh, some additional master planning work is likely going to be necessary. I think the last real intensive study of this area was, uh, conducted in two thousand and five. I know that there's some, uh, uh, been some subsequent work around the, uh, State Highway thirty-five and, uh, various corridor planning. But, uh, you know, uh, an understanding that this is gonna require tools and resources and staff time and staff capacity to support revitalization. But that, you know, in terms of both an opportunity to create something a little bit different. Um, but also, uh, the really, I think, the sort of, uh, uh, symbolic importance of Old Town as the place where Pearland began. And a place that means quite a lot to a lot of people. Uh, infill and redevelopment, um, so obviously, uh, it's something that you are dealing with a lot, um, in in your capacity here. Different focuses here, both in terms of just continuing to promote the transparency of the development process through an open counter or a tool that could replace it. Um, and continuing to really sort of prioritize speed to market along with making sure that things are high quality and in compliance. That are are not going to, um, cause any problems down the road. Um, that can be paired with things like, uh, code enforcement, just making sure that things are well maintained. But then also looking at opportunities to, um, you know, have, uh, additional multifamily and compact residential uses on some of the, um, undeveloped land. Or land that could be easily redeveloped, um, going forward and, you know, specifically along those lines as well. Thinking about the things that allow residents to age in place, something that was really, uh, coming up as a consistent, um, consistent theme. Um, in some of our discussions with the Implementation Committee and so forth. Um, mobility and infrastructure, I think, is fairly straightforward, um, you see, these are various highway and trail and, uh, drainage projects. That are important to, um, the, uh, community's, uh, mobility and and long-term success. Parks and Recreation, another key topic as well, um, in terms of making a community attractive, uh, for, uh, current and future residents. And so thinking about how those are supported, continuing to activate, um, the Parks Recreation, Open Space and Trails Master Plan. Um, and down there at E4 as well, uh, Pearland, it kind of an interesting thing, it's it's public parkland. It's a relatively small percentage of the total city acreage, and in fact, if you look at a competitive set, it's pretty much down near the bottom. But a lot of that is made up by a lot of privately owned park facilities. And so, thinking about, is there an opportunity to provide some financial assistance, um, to, uh, those privately owned facilities? To make sure that they are maintained and recapitalized over the long term, so that they continue to be assets as opposed to something that could, uh, cause some difficulty. Uh, and then finally, uh, just really quickly, cultural arts, there is a cultural arts master plan under development, a lot of that is, you know, still, you know, very much, uh. You know, a work in progress, but, uh, some strong support for this, um, as well. Um, let me just breeze through some of the stuff on the business kind of side here. Business development, this is really all about the work that the EDC and its partners in the Chamber and the City and so forth are doing. To attract and retain and grow jobs, especially primary jobs in Pearland. Again, those jobs that can bring in new wealth into the community and enhance the fiscal sustainability. Another piece of that is, uh, kind of on the entrepreneurial side, uh, there's there's kind of three legs to the stool of job growth. One of them is attracting new businesses from outside a community, another one is helping your existing firms grow, the third one is helping new firms start up. And the Pearland Innovation Hub Program, that is now moving into a coworking space kind of over near the Town Center. Um, and so some opportunities here to take, um, a concept that has been kind of a startup and continue to try to, um, enhance it. So that it's supportive of a strong entrepreneurial environment in Pearland. Workforce development, I I mentioned earlier that talent is the number one issue, this is really just kind of, uh, continuing to take some of that staff capacity that now exists. And build out more formal partnerships and career pathways that can help, um, take people from, take young people or people of any age really. From, uh, one stage to another in their career and, uh, uh, do things like that along with, um, you know, kind of thinking about. Um, how, uh, the work in Pearland Initiative is actually kind of neat, um, an opportunity to connect residents of this community. Uh, with opportunities for employment nearby, um, everyone loves a shorter commute, especially in this era of, uh, sometimes hybrid work and so forth. And so, um, some continued work around that. Uh, Pearland is one of the most racially and ethnically diverse communities according to the Census Bureau's, uh, categorizations of of the race ethnicity. Um, it's one of the most diverse communities in the country, um, and so, thinking about some initiatives around diverse talent as well. To really be a competitive differentiator, because if you think about, um, America becoming a more diverse place. Um, one of the things that's happening is companies are thinking about how their workplaces should be diverse as well. And Pearland offers, um, a diverse workforce that few other places can. And finally, another area where, um, you know, at least some, uh, some potential, uh, overlap with planning and zoning in terms of sites and infrastructure. Um, Lower Kirby, State Highway thirty-five are areas where, um, business development sites, you know. Definitely a lot of like manufacturing type sites or things of that nature are, um, are, they've been sort of, those areas have been identified as priorities. Um, so continuing to to take a proactive approach to that and ensuring that, um, infrastructure amenities are there to support that. So, that is the really lightning round overview of the Pearland Prosperity Plan as it exists now. I, uh, will go ahead and open it up here to any questions, comments, thoughts that you might have.
What do the young professionals, what what are their most common comments?
So, the the young professionals group that we talked to, I think, um, you know, that 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 leadoff there about places to gather. I think that that was, um, really very much at the top of the list. Um, I think another thing that probably has a lot of relevance, um, was missing middle housing. A lot of the, um, a a lot of the folks that we talked to in that group, um, live outside Pearland, but they work here. And so I think a lot of people would, um, like, uh, opportunities to to live in the community, and so that was something that emerged from that group.
What was it that was kind of there, did they elaborate more on that, like, why, you know, is it too expensive?
So, I I, yeah, I think that.
Not enough houses to choose from?
I I think the, um, I think if you if you look at, um, the median home price or, and you could look, uh. There's a couple of different ways to do this, um, Zillow also has really good data that they compile from their database. Where they basically just take like the thirty-fifth, the sixty-fifth percentile of of houses and kind of average those together. To kind of throw out the real low end and the high end and kind of look at what's like a typical home value in this community. And that that's inclusive of single-family, multifamily, or single-family condominium, townhome, what have you. Um, if you look at Pearland's affordability relative to, um, some other communities, um, in the Houston area, it it stacks up fairly well. Especially if you look at some other high-end suburbs in Dallas and and, uh, Raleigh, Raleigh Durham, looks looks fairly good. But if you look at just like the actual dollar value of what that typical value is, it's still, it's it's a reach for people who are earlier in their careers. Depending on what your household income is, and so, I think that was definitely part of it, was just looking at sort of the, um, affordability and availability of a diverse type of product type. Right, so, a lot of single-family homes, less in terms of maybe townhomes or, um, you know, sort of denser development. Obviously, I think in in talking with stakeholders and Council and EDC Board, there's definitely a a strong desire to make sure that. Any sort of, you know, more dense development would be contextually appropriate and, you know, consistent with all the work you're doing with the UDC and and other, um. Uh, comprehensive planning work, um, but, um, you know, I think that that was, that was definitely viewed as an an area of opportunity.
And how would it compare, I mean, I don't know if you guys are legit, but I would think our housing is probably in line with KD or another competitive area. But I think they're gonna have the same issues there as they would have here.
Sure.
Right, I mean, I don't know.
So, so, um, I can't speak to KD specifically, but, um, if you if you look at housing prices all across the United States. Um, it's a little bit of a hockey stick in the last, um, couple of years, um, just with, um, with, uh, kind of what happened post-pandemic. And then, you know, with the tightening of, uh, or with much higher interest rates, um, the, um, you know, there's just a very, very low inventory of stuff for sale everywhere right now. So that, Pearland is not alone in facing that particular challenge. I think the one thing that in terms of a, you call it a competitive threat, is that there's a lot of new building activity taking place just a little further south in Brazoria County. And in some other places, and I think that there is at least some commentary that Pearland needs to consider how it's going to kind of maintain its edge. As other places become the hot new place with the relatively more affordable starter home. What can Pearland do to kind of, you know, continue to be an attractive community? And I think that, uh, you know, the sort of quality of place and the physical appearance of the community has a lot to say about that.
Yeah.
In terms of making things, uh, making sure things are fresh and attractive.
Right.
Um, but also, you know, thinking about what are some specific things from a place perspective that are missing or could be enhanced. And I think that, uh, what you see in the framework has a lot of that, so.
Well, the current pre-PEDC, I don't know if the name is Chairman Woody Aldridge, his position is the President of the PEDC Board?
I I believe he'd be the Chairman of Board, I I, yeah, but, yes.
Regardless of his title, he has, uh, he he was on the Planning and Zoning years ago, and his comment was always that. He had at times, you know, hundreds of employees and normally two people that could afford to live in Pearland.
Yeah.
And and that is, uh, as well, to add to that, the Pearland School District is losing enrollment. Uh, and it's not to private schools, we don't believe, uh, their their thoughts were that people moved in, raised their families, they've stayed. And young families can't afford new housing, especially with this interest rate. In today's world, a three hundred thousand dollar house with the interest rate what it is currently is worth, uh, the same payment as a four hundred thousand dollar house when the interest rate was at three percent. So, you know, you've lost a lot of, uh, of house purchasing power. But I think as well, the city rules themselves, our own rules in 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 the UDC. I don't wanna say prohibit, but but, uh, it's very difficult to get a affordable house when you have to have. A sixty-foot lot or a seventy-foot, you know, an R two or an R three or an R one, it's very difficult to get an affordable house. Because you've got infrastructure that has to run extra, you've got the cost of land that has to run extra. And with the new, uh, drainage criteria, it's it's just very difficult to get an affordable housing with our current rules. I'm hoping with this comprehensive plan, with all the things that we've been discussing, uh, the missing metal and the, uh, compact residential. That we that we get those things, and I think we are, we are, from a, from a mental standpoint, we're we're we're. We're more receptive to those type housings. I had a gentleman in my office that came in today and said, you're not gonna believe this, I went to the city and they were talking about compact residential to me, you know, and I, good, you know, so. Um, and it's what we need, um, other communities are are either following Pearland's lead to the south, they were historically. Alvin has a rule that says, uh, no less than sixty-foot lots.
They went up last week.
They went up to sixty or seventy?
Seventy, I think.
Okay, see, they're going backwards.
A huge setback.
And I, and I shouldn't speak to Alvin, but just they're a neighboring town, um, they're requiring or requesting for. They're requiring or requesting for larger lots. Well, they're gonna have the same problem. There's not gonna be the the younger, you know, families that start out. It Manville was also at sixty, I believe, for quite a long time. They have a new mayor, he's he's in for development, so let's see if that changes in their town. But Iowa Colony is is growing to the south also. Meridian is there and and I saw a billboard today, I was I was in that community and saw a billboard today that said housing prices from the from the upper two hundreds to the one millions. So there's some diversified housing there. I'd like to actually see it. There might be only two houses left in the two hundreds, but well, you know. And if you get an upgrade of any sort, you're in the three hundreds already. But anyways, sorry, I didn't mean to filibuster there, but that's, that's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons why that housing doesn't exist here currently. And that's past staff and his, the history of 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 the of the city council that drove those decisions. Hopefully it changes.
So thank you very much for for those thoughts. Let me just share very quickly where we're heading next. And that is, we will be finalizing the Pearland Prosperity Update. This is your feedback. Your feedback included in that along with the committee, the EDC Board, City Council. Those groups will be looking at the finalized or your final strategy in January, February for their consideration. We're also going to be begin thinking about the actual sort of implementation and sort of the the opera, boy. Opera was, oh, boy, I'm not even trying. The 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 operational structure that's gonna put this into action.
Yeah.
And so it has been a long day, folks. So in in the spirit of that, I will get you out of here. So just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I have one other comment.
Please.
From a parent perspective, I can tell you that I I would say that we do have great schools, but I can see parents complaining on a weekly basis about, I don't want to say crime in schools, but behavior issues are getting out of control. And I know people who pull their kids even out of Pearland. And I don't want to speak bad about Pearland because I think we are really good. But I'm saying that is a big issue that is coming because I see it like every week, major complaints. And I think that if we don't take that serious, that will be something where people will move out of not just Pearland, but they'll go somewhere else where the schools will take behavior serious. And I'm not saying ours don't, I'm just saying what I'm seeing complaints on a regular basis about fights and teachers being disrespected and it's it's become a common thing. And so I think it's unfortunate, but that's one of the things that I would hope that that would be a really strong focus in our community. Because a lot of people pay a lot of money to live here and they want their kid to be able to go to school. And they want their teachers to want to stay here and work here and be, you know, respected. And not to go on that rant, I'm just saying that is a big reason why people move out of communities is, and so I I would hate to see that to be a cause of why somebody would leave or pull their kid or whatever, but just want to make that known.
Thank you for, thank you for putting that on the radar. And, you know, I think definitely when you think about schools, I think that making sure that those continue to be as strong as possible in in whatever way necessary, I think is is very important. So I am going to, any other questions?
I have a comment, a question, mine is from a totally different perspective. Can you kind of help me understand what kind of analysis has been done on how? Because when I read through the plan, there's quite a bit of talk about adding more dedicated resources for different things.
Right.
How are we gonna pay for that as a city?
Sure.
What kind of conversations have occurred that says, okay, me, the taxpayer, I'm not gonna see a substantial increase in my taxes to pay for this? And I'm sure there, I'm sure there has been because obviously with economic development comes growth and more taxes and that kind of thing. But can you just kind of walk us through a couple of those things?
Sure, let me actually tee tee up my answer with my last slide. And that is that economic development is a team sport. So this is a quote here on the screen from John Wooden that says, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, you need a team. I think the thing that I would stress most about this this Pearland Prosperity Plan is is that it's not a plan for a single organization or entity. So it is not the city's plan, it's not the EDC's plan, it's not the chamber's plan, it's kind of all of the above. And so for certain areas, there are certain things that might be a city-led initiative where it's sort of city funding that would need to go towards something. But there are also revenue streams that come through, for instance, the EDC with those economic development dollars that can support a broad range of activities that promote primary job growth. And so there are certainly some different avenues to pursue there. I think ultimately, any holistic economic development strategy for a community is sort of a reflection of priorities. And so one of the things that we heard tonight from council was that there needs to be a little bit of sort of stronger emphasis on fiscal sustainability of things like infrastructure investments. And, you know, thinking about sort of those long term questions. Also had a couple of sort of concepts that received some some of the recommendations, basically not not being viewed as maybe the priority investments for the the community at this time. So some of those things have, you know, some things will likely drop off. In terms of, in terms of analysis, you know, this this process was not scoped to basically do a formal analysis of existing capacity and then, you know, it it really, a lot of that work happens through the work of implementation. So part of what we're gonna do with those implementation guidelines and say, what are the costs in terms of new programs or initiatives that we can sort of predict at this time? And then looking at the other recommendations, talk about what are some potential things that you would need to fund? What are some of the funding considerations? Where are some sources that you can tap that would be, you know, outside of just the general fund? Right? And then that that then kind of takes it down the line in terms of saying, okay, you know, here's how this can be implemented.
No, I think it's a good plan and I think there's a lot of great ideas there. But as I watch my taxes go up every year, I go, okay, this is great, but how much is it gonna cost me?
Yes.
As an individual. And you're right, I mean, it does take a team and it does take a lot of resources and I understand all that. But at the same time, I think the citizens of Pearland need to be able to understand how much it's gonna cost them individually.
Right, right. And I, so I think that's a very good point. And I, part of the, there is a recommendation in there to talk a little bit more about the internal communications within Pearland about how this is, how this is going.
Excuse me, I just wanted to interrupt and just say I have to head down because I'm part of the City Council Executive Session. I trust everybody knows how to read an agenda and stick to it, so please do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I I'll just conclude by by saying very quickly, the there there is nothing in this plan that we feel it would be like a reach. Like this, these are all, this is ambitious, but there's nothing in here that would be like out of, you know, just so far beyond. And so part of the strategy here is to make sure that those internal communications are are getting across to residents who are interested in this type of thing. A lot of people, there there, some people are are gonna be busy in their lives and it's just not really gonna be on their radar. They're just gonna kind of consider, you know, how, you know, how, what their task bill looks like, right? But for people who are interested in terms like HOAs and different sort of community groups, doing a little bit more outreach that, that's one of the recommendations in the strategy to talk about not just kind of what the cost is, but what is some of the return on that investment as well in terms of, you know, when you get new primary job investment into Lower Kirby or on State Highway thirty five, that has a positive impact on the city's finances.
Yeah, no, I understand all that. I'm just, I'm, I was just curious of what kind of conversations there have been around how to fund this development. And I I understand that there's other, there's a whole lot of things that come in. So I was just kind of curious if that's been taken into consideration. You know, as Commissioner Hendricks, you know, people are leaving because of behavioral issues in the schools. Well, they don't have enough resources. But if you add more resources to the school, so does the school tax go up? And then that drives people away from the community as well. So I, it it's, I'm not involved in those meetings, so I don't know. It's just where my mind goes. So thank you.
Very much so, and I would just, your your elected officials and your appointed officials on the EDC Board, your elected officials on council, the leaders of this community are all very dedicated to ensuring that things are fiscally sustainable. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
One more, you you mentioned the private parks. That's a, that's a very interesting concept. And and when I hear it, I think of your HOA that's running a detention pond or or, you know, part of their scope is a detention pond. It's a dry detention pond, it's ugly and, or it's not, not very sightly. It'd be nice, or if the city had the ability to go in and either purchase that detention pond or have some sort of maintenance agreement, you know, for ninety nine years or something like that, to be able then to to amenitize it and, you know, call it part of the park system. If you could change a dry into a wet without, you know, affecting the 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 flood control, which is what its main purpose is, but you can then enhance it, beautify it. You've got a, you've got a park right there in that little neighborhood that's open to the public as well. As well, regional detention to me is a, is a, and I know we just went through a huge drainage study. But I drive along Magnolia quite often and I see there's there's two huge detention areas that to me look like regional detentions and it's it's coming from Silver Lake. They're wet bottomed, there's birds all over it, there's ducks, there, you name it. I hope there's no gators. But nobody walks around those because there's no parking. There is a pipeline that runs right through the middle of them. Pipeline, excuse me, Eastman or they own it? It'd be great to get with that pipeline company and say, can we park on it?
I agree.
You put parking on it, you put a little trail around both of them. You've got two huge parks that you didn't pay anything for or very little for. Compared to going out and purchasing land now at X amount of, you know, thousands of dollars per acre and then trying to start a new park there. You you don't, it it's right there in our backyard, we're looking at it. It should happen, so anyways.
Good idea.
I could be on the Parks Board and they'd kick me off in a meeting.
Well, I appreciate all of the input, thank you all very much for your time and have a great evening.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to number five. Commission input and discussion, twenty twenty three Planning Internship Capstone Project Presentation.
All right, so let me introduce Mr. Logan Ferris. He has been with us since about midsummer, studying the Pearland Town Center. And he is soon to be a graduate of Texas A&amp;M, the upcoming class of twenty four, so. The obligatory lineup there. So with that, Logan's gonna take a little bit of time to wander through his report and the discussion points and highlights and hopefully provide a little bit of educational opportunity on design factors that should be in the back of our mind whenever we see the Pearland Town Center come forward for additional buildings, amendments to the plan. And, yeah, so you have control, take it away, Logan.
Thank you, sir. So in regards to all this previous conversation about financial solvency, about people leaving the district, lack of amenities, different areas having more greenfields to the south compared to us. What what keeps a community competitive as ages? And that's the question that I was asking this whole semester. And with a lot of research and a lot of time and patience and feedback from community development, I have a finished product that I think would help this community a lot. It's gonna work.
It's just a little slow, so.
Oh, okay. Long delay. The challenge was to provide an analysis on design and try to come up with an ideal solution for policymaking for the site. So to take the existing town center, do infill and redevelopment in a sensible manner, that provides a lot of agency to the public and what happens on the site. Placemaking, walkability and climate, those are the three single most important factors that I saw. The first being placemaking, it's pretty obvious. It's what sets apart a place you go to take your kids compared to like a gas station. And you'll see in examples. Maintaining Pearland status as a community of choice that was hit upon by the gentleman before me and it's something that I'll continue to iterate on in context of enhancing the town center. If you're a tourist, it is a place. And we can all agree that a gas station is probably not a place in that context. Neither is this beautiful, okay, we got Buc-E's, okay, I'll give you Buc-E's. That is not a place. That is where you get stabbed at two in the morning. Walmart, not really a place, it's more of a commodity, something you gotta go to.
Gets to have it at two o'clock in the morning.
Right. This this beautiful strip mall, not exactly a place that tourists go to. They don't fly thousands of miles to go see your pronails, great clips, you know? Now we're approaching something. This is a simple public space that had a little bit of effort put into a wood panel deck, some outdoor seating. Suddenly, you have a place with almost zero budget. Now this, that's the next step. And that's what I've been looking at and seeing. This is feasible, is it desirable for the community? Would this bring wealth, young adults, elderly, people of all ages? And would it solve the issue of our school systems gradually running out of children because people bearing children can't afford to live here? There is a placemaking arms race taking place right now, and that is for a variety of reasons. You can see on the left Sundance Square and Discovery Green on the right. These are all very new, recent developments. If you all remember Houston in the seventies, I wasn't born yet. But it was a nightmare for what the pictures I've seen. It was just a bunch of office parks, there's really nothing going on, you just, you drive in, go to work, leave. It was not a place. You had a whole city but no place.
You're going downtown, you're saying?
Downtown, yes, yes, sir. And so this is something that Houston is amending and I commend them for it because Houston zoning regulations are a nightmare. Why? Why placemaking? Smart with America, I did a report that was pretty central to my paper. And it's titled Core Values, Why American Companies Are Moving Downtown? And it's to examine the characteristics, motives and preferences. Just looking at a phenomenon of companies that were left for the suburbs right around the seventies and now they're coming back to the cities and they were trying to understand why. Around five hundred companies, they interviewed forty of those from around one hundred and seventy specific industries. Two, professional, scientific and technical services, wholesale trade, information, finance and insurance, manufacturing, software and development, cybersecurity, everything. This is across every single industry. These companies have incredible pedigree. Fifty two companies from the Fortune five hundred, twelve of the one hundred best companies to work for. Why? Okay, we'll get to it. Here's your answer, it's the public spaces. Companies are trying to compete for labor and labor has made a decision that they do not want to drive to an office park every day of the life. They want to be in public spaces, they want to go off work, go to lunch, check out a nice bistro and then walk back. The labor pool has spoken and companies are responding in droves by going to where the labor is. Now, in order to drive that labor to Pearland, it is not a simple task. It requires a lot of ingenuity and planning and communication. And I'll get into how I'm able to address that. Avocado toast, where are you looking at avocado toast? What generation is most associated with this particular delicacy? That's right, millennials. Woo! I don't know what sounds, you guys listen to. Shrek? Six to ten millennials cite a sense of purpose as part of the reason they choose to work for their current employer. I am a part of that trend. I love this place and that's why I worked so hard on this. This number is even higher, seventy seven percent among connected digitally savvy millennials. And they pay a premium for this sense of purpose as well. Walkability. American Trails is an organization that conducted a survey, Walking the Walk, how walkability raises home values. Say that three times fast. Market demand runs four thousand to thirty-four thousand premiums compared to alternatives in less walkable areas. Now, that's fine and good, what a pair of residents have to say. In a twenty twenty report, they responded that quality of life and quality of place rate highly in their priorities. I'm sure that sounds familiar from the speaker before me. Mixed-use developments and walkable activity hubs will be pursued and expanded. Now, this is a problem because the existing unified development code of Pearland does not lend itself well to mixed use of walkable activity hubs. The only way to make those work is through a central design plan, a lot of oversight. It's immensely complicated and it happens once in a blue moon, hence the Pearland Town Center. An enormous diversity of businesses are relocating downtown and these areas that they're relocating to are dramatically more walkable. Smart Earth America, the central citation of my report, found that the previous locations were around a score of fifty-one in terms of walkability, not a hundred. The new locations were closer to eighty-eight. And looking at Pearland, it's not so great. And so with this in mind, if the craze is walkability, public spaces, how do we get there? To be the community of choice, naturally Pearland must continue to supply what people are choosing. It's pretty intuitive. Do we have those public spaces that are so desirable? Yes, kind of. The Pearland Town Center, I have spent so much time researching this area. I painstakingly recreated it in an isometric online web tool that you will see very soon. Two thousand eight, it was built, YTD, Omni Plan Architectural Park. Around a million square feet, four anchors, one hundred and ten room, four-story Marriott. You get it. My argument is that Pearland's anchor is not Dillard's or Macy's or Barnes &amp; Noble, but rather the town center as a whole. It is the site itself, the location, the feel, the place that drives people there, not the individual anchors. And what makes placemaking so important is the fact that these individual uses put together, stacked on top of each other below, together, they're greater than the parks and that small economy reinforces itself. And that's seen in towns' economic downturn, areas that are more walkable and mixed use can do a lot better in depressions. A public runways placemaking activates a virtuous cycle where buildings and iconic areas attract high-intensity and investors, further cementing areas for section of significance and popularity. That is from CBRV, one of the top real estate groups. The Pearland Town Center was initially sold as a lifestyle center. My aim is to transform it into a beating heart, a civic center, something that the whole of Pearland gathers around. And so how does all this start? Because it's all incredibly complicated and difficult. If it was this easy, it would have happened already. So we're looking for solutions. These are some optimal outcomes. That is a apartment complex near my hometown in Magnolia. It was a wooded area that's currently being ravaged due to poor forest protection laws. And you see stuff like this pop up. There are barely any trees. These walkable green spaces are kind of useless, like little dirt patches. They cut corners in design. These areas are cheaper. They go for lower rent because they're undesirable. They're isolated and the parking lots are dangerous and they poorly utilize the green spaces that they have. And so looking at this, one has to wonder if there is a better solution and there is. That's why you're here. Introducing icograms. This is a web-based interface that can all be ran in your browser and you can create these neat little isometric visualizations. Now, if you know the Pearland Town Center, you probably recognize this strip because I painstakingly recreated it over a period of like eight hours. It was awful. But this is the final result. And you can see there's two images and the one on top is how it exists today with these little shrubs and benches. And that image in the second half has more ample crosswalks. The trees are a lot larger to provide usable shade canopy structures and they do a lot to provide to the aesthetics of the space. This shows the implementation of icograms if it was a form-based code. And you can see, this is supposed to represent the width of lots, something that sets apart a town center from a big box store, is how wide the actual lots are. Because if you have lots of little shops next to each other, people tend to dart in and out of different shops and it increases the amount of economic activity in an area. Mandating high-quality spaces. The whole idea of form-based codes is that there's much stronger control over the aesthetics of a space and it also creates a lot more coherence. What you see in most of Pearland is like really generalized, like globalized architecture. If you've seen one Walmart, you've seen them all and that's kind of the concept behind mass manufactured architecture. This is supposed to put an end to that. It's supposed to produce more unique local architecture that gives Pearland a true heart, a culture that is unlike anything that you would see, let's say, in the Heights, for example. This shows how you would implement controls over awning depths. This is very important, what you'll see later. A big issue with the town center is that it is hot. There is not enough shade. And when I went there for my field trip, took pictures, I almost passed out. So don't do that. Don't go there in the summer, but we're gonna see how we can address that. This shows things like articulation of like peaks and roofs and whatnot. And this is massing. So if you're curious about placemaking, you want to make places that draw people to Pearland, other cities aren't doing this, specifically cutting out sections between structures and creating little nooks and crannies for people to gather. Placemaking is not a just general concept. It's a lot of little implementation, little successful spaces. This is in regards to flood detention. So you mentioned before about flood detention and a lot of areas are difficult to build in because of pro-mental services and whatnot. The aim of this is to give people more flexibility and I'll have to explain it because it's not gonna be difficult for you to interpret. But this is a Walmart, this is a hospital essentially. Person's trying to build a hospital, but this lot is very thin and they're struggling to meet their flood detention requirements. And this Walmart wants to build a Buc-Ee's next to it. And so they need to get their flood detention requirements as well, but they have this big parking lot. And so the solution is that both entities make a mutual agreement to pay for a underground water retention box culvert. And so this opens up the opportunity to actually have a lot more flood detention on a site that has less, that has like more impermeable surfaces. Pearland's competitiveness in regards to other cities depends on how creative that we are. This is the solar problem. These areas in red, these are all areas that are completely naked to the sun. Meaning if you're walking down there at noon in July, you will be cooked alive if you're on that particular side of the site. Now, all the shops on the other side, they have the benefit of enjoying shade from the top of these structures. And so people walking down here are cool. That's only a very minuscule part of the site. And so one has to wonder if this would have negative impacts on the businesses renting out areas that are being subjected to solar rays twenty-four seven. And that was the whole purpose of showing you the visualization of the more in-depth greenery. Climate is contextual and this is policy failure. If you look at something like this, it ideally technically follows all of the landscaping guidelines, but is anybody gonna use the space in the peak hours of the day? Probably not, because there is no shade, there's no area to protect people. And that, it just, it's a place that could have been a place, but ultimately failed because of bad policy. And that's what I'm trying to address. This is a comparison of the Sugar Land Town Square and the Pearland Town Center. And what you'll notice is that they opted to use a lot of lower-to-the-ground trees with wide canopies, lots of leaves. There's a lot more shade covered. And so that kind of area is gonna have a much more welcoming climate to pedestrians. And as a result, I imagine people would rather want to be in a space that's cooler in the summer. Canopy cover, same concept. You can see how in the Sugar Land Town Square, they put a lot of effort into situating bushes underneath canopy cover. And in similar pictures that I actually took this summer in the Pearland Town Center, it's not the same situation at all. They're decorative trees, they're cut really low and they're intentionally kind of shrubbed. And they just, they don't provide any sort of shade cover and so nobody's using those benches. And so you have an under-realized space. The whole point of icograms is to gather public input, to put an end to this and to find a better solution. Not your grandmother's development, good. I had a little bit of creative license with this title. I'm sure Martin's thrilled. So most of these, most of these colors, I swatched straight off of the existing land use, virtual land use map and so you recognize a lot of those. And what you'll also notice is that that map is very colorful and that's by design. The whole purpose of mixed-use areas is that the existing coffee shop, it has patrons, people working and going to offices during the day, has patrons, people who live there, has patrons from tourists. And so this little coffee shop, even in the two thousand eight depression, it's gonna do a lot better. It's gonna survive where a lot of places would go belly up. And so this is where we talked about resilience. This is how you do it. This is a visualization of what the software would look like. So this is the crux of the argument, is that there's a fundamental limited mindset about what structures could be or what they could give the community. And so the purpose of this is to demonstrate that allowing more structures, more people in an area naturally means more taxpayers. And this is demonstrated over and over that taller structures with more tenants actually produce way more property tax compared to lower density, single-use households. And so if controlled and delivered by the community, by their own input, this gives them a lot of agency. They can control exactly what kind of stuff they want to see in a redevelopment pattern. So it gives them agency, but it also gives the city or funds. So when you're talking about the fund problem, how are we gonna pay for this or that? Instead of it being a pie where you have to reallocate funds to one thing or another, you approach redevelopment as a way to make the pie bigger. And so that's, that's a really important aspect of this software. This is what happens if you incorrectly, imagine you not knowing any zoning codes. You try to drag something into a fire line. It'll warn you and tell you not to do that. And so as people drag stuff on, they'll start to learn the rules of placemaking and they become a part of it. Because otherwise, it's not very intuitive. I've read the zoning codes even as a real planning major. They're pretty confusing. So I feel so bad for anybody else trying to do it without an intuitive software like this. So this is another aspect of it. Let's say somebody wants a performing arts center and this is really important to them. In order to place the structure and how to make this happen, they first have to meet the population gap. Need a certain amount of taxpayers to support an amenity, particularly one that's expensive to build. And so by meeting a certain hundred thousand dollar minimum and property tax estimated over the area, you can suddenly afford more amenities. And this is how Pearland becomes more competitive compared to other cities. Other cities are not thinking like this. They're thinking about, how are we going to assuage local residents? But they don't have the tools to encourage further growth. This is the final result. In months and months of labor and fun activities and games to the public, they've decided exactly what kind of public space they want and they controlled it. And so whenever it starts to be built, they know exactly what's happening because they're the ones that put it together. And so you open up all these opportunities for more housing, more tax base and better financial solvency for the city. And so a lot of these money worries would disappear if we had the population density to support that. The thing is, in the past, we didn't have these tools. As a population entity, it was a risk. This reduces the risk. It better communicates to the public what they get out of it and ultimately solves a lot of problems in terms of desirability because they'll have the amenities. It's a vector-based program, so you can zoom in as far as you like on the images. You also can make them winter-themed. Whenever we first looked at the software, marketing made a Loseraptor. And so the Loseraptor parking was an inside joke for a while in the office.
That would be very entertaining.
I mean, my F-150 Raptor needs a place to go, so.
So.
That's funny.
The second benefit of this is that the, the art is very easy to mentally process. I know you've seen way too many SketchUp visualizations before you're on good, but this is supposed to be super approachable and easy to process. And so people don't feel threatened if it's in such an easy-to-consume format and they might be willing to discuss ideas they'd otherwise be vehemently opposed to. As I mentioned before, the primary aim of this is to increase the total pie of Pearland's budget. This is much a wealth-building opportunity as it is for building amenities and improving the desirability of Pearland. Without this sort of tool, I don't know what your other options would be, but this is just an option to give you some more flexibility. And so that is all I have.
Good.
If y'all have any questions?
So what you're saying is we need like a Fredericksburg to occur somewhere in the city.
But the residents would have total control over where it happens and how much of it they get.
Yeah. If you've been on Facebook or next door and somebody says, hey, what's going in on this corner? And you read the comments of the average citizen, I had to be careful because I'm on microphone. They're, they're not practical, nor are they ever going to happen from a financial standpoint. You know, to say, I went on this small corner, you know, a Papa's restaurant, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen for a lot of reasons. So there's definitely a lack of understanding of what should go where, you know, to the average public. So that would be my concern, opening it up. Leave it there.
I agree.
The, one of the things I was gonna point out in your, in your drawing there with, with the extra trees and such, there, the mall was built by CBL. Charles Bain Leibowitz, I think, is the name of the gentleman that founded that company. They own a lot of malls. There are no more closed malls coming in. They're all open as the town center is, Pearland Town Center. But the retailers that come in, the Forovers and the, I, forgive me, I don't know the stores. They will fight you tooth and nail if you put a tree that blocks their signage. Because they're gonna lose customers. They may gain the customers back by the more walkability, but they're gonna still say they're losing customers because the people in the cars can't see their signage because of the trees. So there's an, there's an inherent fight.
Right.
A resistance from, from their own retailers that are paying them the rents. So it's a, it's a tough battle.
Absolutely.
But it, it should happen. I mean, that Sugar Land, what you showed, the Sugar Land was much nicer and more walkable, I think, than ours. Being here in two thousand seven and eight and watching that, the fight that happened between the Pogamicuin site or the two eighty-eight and Beltway eight site versus that site, it was a political nightmare and it was a business nightmare. It was, it was, it was fun to watch, but I surely wouldn't want to have my money in either one of those two because you didn't know which one was gonna win until the end, until it actually occurred. And, and I think the city held the CBL project, the Pearland Town Center project to a really, really high standard and made it difficult for them to win. And so I think we're still suffering from that. I don't know, how many amendments did they come in for? I would imagine there's a, there's, somebody knows the number to that. But I can't, I gotta say they came in at least a dozen times after they were approved to tweak their, their PUD back then, I believe. And it was, you know, you just wondered, why are you, why are you here? Why didn't y'all handle that at staff level? Well, they couldn't because it was, the PUD is so stringent. I don't know what we could do except rewrite it with them. You know, to give them some flexibility to do some of the things you mentioned. I'd love to see it, though. The next intern.
Yeah. I think Pearland Town Center, it was, I think it's, since COVID, I feel like it's not as strong as it used to be of a place. And I'm not really sure totally how. Of a place. And I'm not really sure totally how it got there. Other than COVID affected a lot of places, retail. But it didn't stay as strong as like Baybrook Mall.
Right.
And well, Baybrook Mall does have that outdoor area, but I don't go to it. But I do like that it's inside. I like that it's inside. And I think you're gonna find like all east side parent, uh, residents. Just go to Baybrook area, like for everything, because there's just a lot more in one little bitty area. And then on the west side, it's just, it's just different. I don't know.
Well, driveability, accessibility for an east side person, that's fifteen minutes to get to there. But otherwise, you gotta drive through.
In the middle.
And we don't wanna tell them about Magnolia. That's the best kept secret.
Yeah.
But if you drive down Broadway, it does take quite a while to get there. In, in their mind especially, I'm not driving freeway, I'm driving traffic. And also if you leave the Pearland Town Center, I invite y'all to do this, leave Pearland Town Center and just watch which way the traffic is going. There's a lot of people heading north and a lot of people heading south and only, you know, there's people going into Pearland. The Silver Lake and, you know, that area, but it's not as much as the people going north. I saw the regional maps when they, when they were selling that, the concept to the retailers. They projected that people were gonna be coming from Angleton and, and Manville and Alvin. And even as far as Lake Jackson on the weekends. And it was barely north of the Beltway where. The, the, the trade area that they felt like they were going to grab. Definitely none of Clear Lake because they would go to Baybrook and then up to Sugar Land, you know, ve- very little of that. But they missed the mark. They truly missed the mark. The, I think a majority of the people, if you took their zip codes, would, will come from inside the Beltway.
Right.
Yeah.
Benefit to us because we get their tax dollars, but, but I think they missed, they missed the mark on who their shoppers were.
And I think Martin shared with you that we have discussed quite a bit over their activities at Bass Pro. I know you didn't look at the Bass Pro area, but.
Oh, I.
The different stuff that could go on and making sure that they bring in really nice restaurants. No matter what, if we're gonna have a go to place to hang out, we need to feel like it's safe. Um, and that it has really nice restaurants, I guess. But I don't know why that area, it, I don't know why no one's.
Right.
Developed it or why, or why Pearland Town Center is, the shops are just struggling, but.
That's a, a big aspect of report is the fact that sometimes it's easier to redevelop an existing area. Than to build out all the infrastructure to a brand new space like Lower Kirby. Part of the reason why the town center is struggling so intensely is the fact that there's just not enough population to support it. There's no, there's not enough local people patroning it, like out, out of convenience because they don't live there. So why would I drive down the town center, get out, walk in my car when I could go to a drive through? But if you have a nucleus, if you have so many activities and, and so many high dollar amenities like, like an Apple store or. Trader Joe's, I keep saying, if you had a Trader Joe's there, that would do wonders for the area. A part of the issue is that you can't afford a lot of these really nice amenities. Like, let's say there's like a crazy sports complex there. That's a lot of money to pay for. But if you have the critical mass of people, you know, if you had, let's say a condominium and a park, uh, parking garage right next to it. Those people provide X amount of dollars and suddenly this is economically viable because people here are paying for it. It doesn't even come out of the taxpayers' money. Even better, if you have enough population density, you can do a tax freeze for like ten years. But that just depends on how intense people are comfortable and how worried they are. And the whole point of Icarograms is to transparently communicate. This is what you get. This is our traffic impact analysis. That was the other thing that bothered me the longest time here was the traffic impact analysis. Because the thing is, middle housing by itself isn't a problem. But middle housing with no amenity access is like a problem. And the reason being, when I showed you that picture of the apartment complex, it's basically in the middle of nowhere. But if you have your apartment complex, your amenities, your amenities, you've got a gym right here. They're never gonna drive somewhere else because why would I do that when it's so much more convenient to get my food here, workout here? And go here to watch a movie, you know? And so that's how you reduce traffic is by providing better walkable amenities. And the other thing is you guys were mentioning, uh, about like the youth focus group. I might be the youngest person in this room. I don't know. Martin could fool me. I don't care about front yards or backyards. I want, I used to live in Clear Lake. Which direction is that from here? I don't know. I used to live on Neptune Lane, that direction. Thank you. That way, okay. I know some of the direction. I used to live on Neptune Lane, right outside a golf course. My backyard wasn't my backyard. My backyard was this big golf course. We go biking all around it. I never cared about backyards because I had a public space to use. And everywhere else I went, there was never a public space for me to use again, nowhere for me to run. I had to go and run on the side of a road, no sidewalk and avoid getting hit by the F two fifty, you know, at two in the morning. Cause I would.
My raptor hunts interns.
Right. And so that's the thing, I think a lot of people my age are willing to make concessions in terms of total real estate. And backyards or front yards because we care more about the social civic life than we do about space. We don't really want single family homes until we have a family. And so I think if you develop that, I would gladly live here. If you had a bunch of condominiums and small little town homes connecting to each other, I would snap it up instantly because I don't like driving at all.
Yeah. If it was next to a hangout, like somewhere you could go and, yeah.
And so that's the plan for the town center is to land recycle rather than keep, keep sprawling out into new green areas. Because then you have, you get, you'll get the same town center. It just, it won't be what you think it is because you're not the population to support the nicer.
You've been here while we've had the, uh, the multiple attempts at the acreage that still remains at the Pearland Town Center. What are your thoughts on those or what do you, what do you, if it were a blank slate, which it is, but you had a check, you know, what would you put on there?
My first thought was a new town hall. Reason being is if you say to the public. We want to reorient our, our public, our social life to the town center. And to the high school right next to it. We wanna really invest in this as a new community. Separate from Shadow Creek and separate from everything to the east. This is its own unique community. And these taxpayers, they're gonna pay for new, new park trails, they're gonna pay for new trailheads. Uh, the sports complex, uh, movie theaters. And all of that will be at the civic life with the town center at the center. Uh, the Kenny Municipal Complex did that for the same reason. And the reason being is if you're a municipal center. Your complex, your decision makers are at the center, right next to the Starbucks, right next to the gym. It doesn't feel like there's some, some distant, um, disconnected, you know, jerks that don't care about you. Because you can talk to them regularly. On your way to work, you can stop by here, walk around, pick up a donut and say hi to your commissioner. And that's what separates communities from little isolated pockets of suburbia. And so that's what I, I tried to advocate for my whole life is to have that social center. Because it's something I've missed my whole life and I'd like to see it for my children.
So with Pelican being in the mix and having additional opportunities at, you know, reinvesting in the town center. Felt like it was a, a great opportunity to have someone, uh, who's not exactly on staff level. But has some free will to, to go and do some exploration, uh, to go through and. Examine some of these characteristics. You know, we threw the paper, uh, it's broken down into a phase one, phase two types of initiatives. Phase one being a little on the less intense economic side. Where phase two is of course a heavier investment, uh, back into the town center. But, you know, I have a tendency to agree on walking, uh, in the middle of summer. In the middle of the day on a Saturday, Sunday, uh, at the town center. Isn't as pleasant of an experience as we would, uh, hope for. Some of these initiatives would be a cool thing to add on when we get that opportunity at the next time for reinvestment. So.
If it were me and I had a blank check, I think you might like this. My whole downstairs, I'd have a big building, like a housing building, really nice upscale housing up top. The whole downstairs would be these little bitty mini, like rental spaces, like bar. Wine, wine bar, piano plays, little art studio. It'd be a little mix of, and then on both sides, because we have a whole lot of parking on the other side and there's a lot of, it's not being used. A place where people would just can go in between and you, you would try to small enough where you can go in there and get something and get out, right? Little shops, little dough, little coffee shop, stuff like that, like a little, like a little, I don't know. In some cities they call on their main street or their, but that's, that's how to envision it, but. Nobody's really wanted to build that.
So Strongtowns.org.com, they have a thing called the Main Street Initiative. That's exactly what you're talking about. I, in my time here, I went through a whole oscillation of emotions of like. Man, I'm so excited to get to work. And then I got smacked with realities, like this is really complicated. And I got smacked. I was like, this got knocked down. Uh, this might, they might not like this. And I, I just, I'm glad that people are so receptive to new ideas. Because I believe in Pearland and if I had the opportunity to do long range planning and to continue developing this, I would.
Yeah. But I think costs, it's, it's a cost. Nobody's wanted to come forward and do something like that.
Right.
They wanna put housing there, like all one hundred percent housing there.
In the blank space?
In the blank. I'm talking about that between the detention pond and the.
And the town.
In the town center. Yeah.
Well, it was supposed to be a city or a, I don't know, a city sponsor, but they, they wanted it for an event center. At one point it was a hockey place you could play hockey, but you could hold graduations, but you could, similar to the ones you see in the Katie and Cypress. Berry Center there. Um, but, uh, you know, who's gonna pay for it? To your point, are my taxes gonna go up?
It would take a lot of money from somebody who had a ton of money to put something like that together. It would be, I think it would be successful and we'd have all kinds of people. We'd probably have people from Webster come over to it, right? But I just think cost is the issue.
There is one solution because a theory I had is that if CBL doesn't want to. My, the ideal is that the overwhelming majority of these new housing units, if they're townhouses, if they're condominiums. They're all gonna be for purchase. And so the idea I gave is that. Once the community and CBL and all these people have a design charade and we kinda decide, okay, let's say this is a quadrant of the parking lot. And they want this to be, uh, I don't know, a mid rise condominium. They want this to be townhomes, townhomes. Little apartments, I don't know. And as it gets filled in and there's a plan, if CBL doesn't want to build something, they can sell it off. And I can guarantee that having a lot here that's ready to build, that's shovel ready, it will get snapped up. Because the fact that this is in proximity to other amenities, it'll have such a higher market price that it'll just get picked up just like that. The other thing, there's this thing called non-market housing. And it's when a nonprofit, like a church will get together. And they will build a condominium and whoever has a share on the condominium owns that part of it. And it's locally managed. It self-regulates. And so the only cost that people pay is for the price of maintaining the actual facility. And so in that way, you get your affordable housing, you get your teachers and people. Uh, and that's like your public initiative for reaching out to nonprofits and inviting them. I don't think any non-market housing group has been invited to build something ever. So if you did this, I imagine, I imagine something might come up. It's all about giving options, giving options. CBL, you can build this or you cannot build it. We just want it to be for purchase. We want it to be reusable. If you don't, if you don't think it's possible, then if you'd like to sell it off to, to a different buyer to build, then cool. It's all about giving options, but I imagine after the public has given input, it would have a lot of popularity.
And through all of this, we've realized that we just really developed the next, um, SimCity game.
Did you put a Dixie Chicken there?
Oh, I forgot to, I'm sorry.
No whoop.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. That was great. Yes.
Appreciate it.
All right. So next would be Discussion Autumn's City Council Update Report.
Yes, uh, so the last couple of times I haven't been here, so I haven't been able to get y'all the update. Uh, running back through, uh, I believe it was mid, early November. Um, we had the conditional use permit for the chicken restaurant on Main, uh, eighteen eighteen. That got approved by council. Um, if you remember, that's right next to a car wash. And in front of, uh, the ERS Cat Office Building, uh, that previously got approved. Uh, so a lot of good, uh, good activity to happen in that area. If you remember the barber shop, school, barber school.
Oh, yeah.
On Country Place, that got approved.
Okay, good.
The, I don't remember what's with the name, uh, the school in Old Town Harmony.
Horizon.
Rise. Uh, Mozzard School, thank you Patrick.
The one that basketball.
The one with, yes. Uh, that ended up getting approved for the transparency storefront window, uh, discussion. Um, they had a discussion about, uh, saving the old building that's there. Uh, but it didn't become a part of the resolution. It just kind of was left as a, y'all go figure it out. But we sure would like for that to end up somewhere. Uh, but the, the transparency, which is what y'all had approved. Uh, did get approved.
Okay.
Going to the next meeting, uh, there was the auto car wash, uh, at Smith Road and Broadway. If you recall, that's part of the Braun Development. That is currently, uh, out there playing in the dirt, building, uh, their site work. Uh, that got approved.
Oh, yeah.
I wanna say, was that Mr. as well or, yeah, Mr. Car Wash? Um, and then there was a auto repair facility, um, Shadow Creek.
Close to Buc-E's?
Yeah.
Just to the west of Buc-E's. That got approved with the previous conditions. If you remember, they ran out of time with their CDP. I just had to come back in for a re, uh, reapproval. But, uh, that catches you up on all of the CP zone, all of those activities. We took the comprehensive plan, uh, for its first public hearing. Got some good feedback upon, uh, items to do a little bit more research into. Uh, and to provide, uh, councils some additional updates. Uh, we're also doing some additional public outreach. Uh, with, um, some QR codes, uh, that discuss a variety of things that people wanna see. And, uh, types of development and things that would help support, uh, businesses with the community. We passed out.
Oh, I was gonna say to remind them to scan and fill out the survey that's downstairs.
Oh, right. So, uh, with each of, uh, the public meetings that's going on. We're offering or replaced out, uh, a little QR code, uh, that's outside in the lobby. So feel free to have your voice heard again, uh, and participate in that. But the point I was getting to, uh, was that we had a really successful, uh. Hometown parade. Yeah.
Hometown Christmas, yes.
Uh, Christmas parade and handed out a thousand trees. Uh, and each one of those trees had the QR code on it. So.
And for console, that we made it to Berry Rose before we went for thousands.
Handed out a thousand trees.
We got to Berry Rose from the schools. So, yeah, we didn't make it the whole way.
You could have, yeah, you could have handed out another thousand. It was amazing that people were like, oh, I want one. You know, they, they'd see, so I'll take one. So I never thought that would be the case.
That is so cool.
The crazy thing is, we estimated we probably could have done about four or five thousand trees and made it actual to the end.
Yeah, now what happens to them after they left, I don't, you know?
Hopefully they're loved and cherished because the Lorax talked to each one of them and said, go with a successful tree.
That's cute.
But other than that, that's our uh our update.
Oh, that's cool. Okay, so commissioners' activity report, anybody have anything? All right, but that said, the next P and Z regular meeting will be Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty four. Does anybody know they won't be here for that?
It's a Tuesday as well, so I just put it in my calendar because I wouldn't remember.
I'm glad you said so, okay.
And so is the next meeting will be right after Martin is a King Day.
King on Tuesday as well, wow, that's very interesting.
Two Tuesdays. All right, well, that, then I'll move to adjourn the meeting. At eight twenty two.
Very good.
Good job. Good, excellent.